All right, everyone. Welcome to the May 23rd, 2019 work session of the Penfield Planning Board. Allison, please call and roll.
Hetske.
Here.
Bastian.
Here.
Knower.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Nursing her.
Here.
Sangster.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
I cut off. I really cut off, but then...
All right. We have meeting minutes from the May 9th meeting. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them.
I have. I'd like to make a motion to accept meetings.
Okay. Burton and Bastian.
Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Knower.
Aye.
All right, Zach, can I just go through our table items and action items for this evening?
I'd love to. Uh, in the sake of time, I know Bill has to be out here by a certain time tonight. Um, first thing I wanted to jump to, um, kind of going off script from the agenda, is our sketch plan application, uh, for the Heritage Trician Services daycare proposed at 2730 Atlantic Avenue.
Okay.
Uh, since the board last met, that was your, uh, public hearing discussion for the sketch plan applications, the second round of the sketch plan, uh, for the proposed daycare. And the result of that, um, was, there was a lot of questions and concerns from the board members we had here that evening about, um, traffic in general, about existing conditions of this intersection, uh, at Atlantic, Scrivener, Whalen, uh, all controlled by the state DOT, um, and how it all interacts with the middle school to the north, and what potential impacts may a daycare have at that intersection in relation to the existing traffic. Uh, as the applicant presented, they did present, they did have a traffic impact study prepared by SRF, uh, that was available during the meeting. Uh, there were still some questions, uh, about the contents and the findings of that impact study, and I believe they are here tonight in the audience. And, uh, one of our, um, requests from that meeting was that they be here to answer any questions from the board, or perhaps to present, um, a, a brief summary of the impact study, and, uh, just kind of give a, a synopsis of what's there that wasn't truly, that was still left, uh, kind of unknown, or more, uh, information was wanted at the meeting last, last time, so...
Clarifying some of the questions.
Correct. Um, so I'll leave that up to you, AJ, and board members if you want to bring them up.
Do you want to come up for a couple of minutes and...
Sure.
Give us a, uh, a little bit more detailed summary.
Sorry, I didn't count. We're not sure. Dan knows. Dan knows.
Just don't want to get too lengthy, but...
No. Uh, I've asked Amy to, to give a short summary synopsis statement, and then we can dive in as, as much as you like. The other thing I'm sure you all received was the letter from B&amp;L, the Town Engineer Review Letter, which I thought was a very fine letter, uh, given the fact it totally supported what our report was.
Right.
But I, with that, I will simply let Amy, uh, go through, and again, we're happy to answer any questions.
Do you want me to actually go through, uh, a few minutes about what the report entails and everything that we did, or do you feel comfortable with that and just want me to answer questions?
I think a three-minute...
Sorry. Yeah, you could do a three-minute, uh, review.
Sure, absolutely.
Summary.
Um, so a typical traffic study starts out with looking at existing conditions. So the first thing we did was actually, um, compile traffic counts at the intersection. So that was done Wednesday, May 9th of last year, um, 2018. So being that this is a daycare center and we have the school right adjacent to the site, um, we looked at the seven to nine morning commuter peak time, and then 2:30 to 6 o'clock, which is a little outside of what we normally do. Normally, we look at four to six, which is the commuter peak, but because we have the school, we stretched that out to 2:30 because we wanted to make sure we captured everything. So within those timeframes, we then identify the actual peak hour, because what we actually analyze is a one-hour time period. So those peak hours were 7:15 to 8:15 in the morning, and 4:30 to 5:30 at night, which is kind of what we would expect for a commuter peak. So what you don't see here is that the school peak. So what that means is that the traffic during the school peak is slightly less than the traffic during the actual commuter peak, okay?
Okay.
Which is interesting because with a daycare center, the actual peaks for the daycare center are going to coincide more with the commuter peak than with the school peaks. So you see an overlap in the morning, but not in the evening. Um, so the next step in the process is then to develop a background condition, because the project, once it's built, will be a year from now. And as you know, you've got other projects in the area that have, may have been approved by the board, or are under construction, that wouldn't have been included in the traffic, the traffic counts. Okay? So we included the Windsor Ridge subdivision, and then we also included a growth rate on top of that, just to account for anything else that we didn't know about at the time that we did the study. Um, then we look at the actual land use, which in this case is a daycare center. A lot of times, we'll use Institute of Transportation Engineers data to, um, actually project what we expect the future trips to be from the land use. In this case, they have two other local sites in the Rochester area. So we were able to get really good local information on the daycare center, exactly what their procedures are, how many people they expect.
Similar-sized operation.
Exactly. So that's how we projected the future trips for that. Um, then we look at the layout of the driveways, and how much traffic goes in every direction on various roadways, whether it's Atlantic, or Scrivener, or Whalen, to see where traffic is going to be going to and coming from. So that's our distribution. So you'll see a figure in our report that has percentages on it. That's where the trips are going to and coming from during the various peak times. So this site in particular, we expect in the morning, we're going to have 43 entering trips and 36 exiting trips, and in the evening peak, it's going to be 50 entering and 56 exiting.
And the difference there, go ahead.
You say the AM peak is for a one-hour period?
Correct.
During the peak commuter travel?
Correct.
Okay. That's not total?
What do you mean?
Number from 6 AM to 10 in the morning.
No, 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 no. This is just the one-hour peak. Right, right. So, as you know, I mean, as a parent, you're, you may have to be at work at who knows when. You might have to be at work at 7 o'clock in the morning, maybe you don't have to be at work until 9 o'clock in the morning. So that's why there's a wide range of when parents are dropping off and picking up their children. You know, maybe you get out of work at 4 o'clock, maybe you don't get out until 5:30, you know? So then, that's why the actual trips don't necessarily coincide with the number of children at the daycare center. Okay? Um, so then we add all that together, and we do what's called, uh, a capacity analysis at the intersection. So we have a software called Synchro that does that for us. It looks at the signal timings, it looks at how much traffic is on the roadway, it looks at, um, the peaking characteristics, so if you have more traffic coming in a 15-minute period versus spread out throughout the whole hour. So it looks at a whole range of things, and then it comes up with a letter grade for the intersection. A being the, the least amount of delay, F being the worst, kind of like your grades in school, right? Um, and so what we see with this intersection in the morning, we've got some levels of service E's and D's on the side roads. That's pretty typical on a heavy road like Atlantic, um, even with the signal. And the way New York State DOT tends to, um, time their traffic signals is they obviously favor their own roadway more, and cause more delays at the side roads. It's just the way they do things. So that's why you see this, and you'll see As and Bs for the traffic on Atlantic. So all the way through here. Um, we do have, uh, the same levels of service. Once we have our full build conditions at the intersection, we see a little bit of a drop, um, between background and existing, but not really any, any changes at all for, um, the full build conditions at the intersection. And then at the two proposed driveways, those are unsignalized, so they're going to be stop-controlled exiting the driveways. So we've got Bs and Cs on the driveway on Scrivener, and then Bs, Cs, and D's on the driveway on Atlantic. So because we know that Atlantic has a lot of traffic and we have some congestion at times here, we also did a couple of other things with the study. One was a queue analysis.
Can I stop you there for a second?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can we go back? You're, you're talking about this area right here?
Yep.
And can you just back up for me and explain the, uh, the numbers again? So you have in column, let's call it the first column, the AM, and the Atlantic Avenue through and right and left turns, looks like are As.
Yes.
And the numbers there are 6.4, 4.6. That is, what does that number represent?
That's the average delay for a car making that movement, in seconds.
So the E for northbound left on Whalen Road is basically a minute.
A minute, yep. Yeah.
And northbound right, southbound left, and southbound through right are 38 seconds, basically. So the worst-case scenario currently is northbound left during that peak hour.
Correct. Yep. Because if you think about it, um, I don't know off the top of my head, the signal probably operates on about a 90-second cycle, anywhere from 90 to 120 seconds. So if you pull up at the end of green on Whalen Road, you're northbound, you want to turn left, and the signal just turns red as you're pulling up, you're going to have to wait a good 60 seconds just for the traffic on Atlantic until that signal changes to green again.
So you're at Atlantic heading east, and you return northbound on Scrivener, and you're going to have to wait for the westbound traffic. So you're going to wait almost a full second.
But what that is, is, uh, eastbound left...
That's the eastbound left, which in the morning, yeah.
Six, 6.4 seconds.
Yeah. That's on average, over the course of the hour. And that's...
So you're going to wait, it's basically you're waiting for a gap in the westbound traffic at that point in time.
To cross.
Right.
Yeah.
And so your assumption, or the study findings, are that, that northbound left on Whalen goes from 60 seconds to 74 seconds, say?
Yes. Now, you also need to look at the...
So it's 15 seconds more.
Well, you need to look at the interim step, the background conditions, because the background conditions are going to occur whether this project moves forward or not. So we always compare our full build condition to background.
Okay.
Okay? So it's still an increase, but it's less than 10 seconds.
Right, okay. Got it. Because the background condition is 64.7 seconds.
Right.
Okay? All right.
I, I have one question. These blocks here and here, that's coming out of the daycare?
It's, the, it's the driveway itself, so, um, if you look at it, this is, see how it says eastbound Atlantic Avenue?
Right.
So that's going to be the left turn turning in, and then southbound proposed driveway is going to be coming out of the driveway. So it's both, but it's, yeah, it's taking into account the left turn into driveway, which is, when you have an unsignalized intersection and you're on your main line, that's really the only movement that's going to have any delays, the left turns, because thrus and rights are pretty much moving freely, right?
Yep.
So, and then you have delay coming out of your driveway.
So you're anticipating that if, at the end of the day, when people pick their kids up, that's turning onto Atlantic out of the driveway, that bottom right D at 30 seconds?
Yes.
So they're going to wait 30 seconds for a gap in the traffic to get out.
Yep. Now, that's an average, and because this driveway only has one exiting lane, it's an average of the delay for a left turn and a right turn. Obviously, a right turn is going to have less delay.
Sure.
Right? So that's why, um, intuitively, you would think it's going to be worse, and the delay is going to be longer, but it's an average of both of those moments.
Okay?
Okay.
Yep.
So the other two, uh, analyses that we provided with the study were a queue analysis and a gap analysis. So I'll talk about the gap analysis first, since we're talking about the driveways. The gap analysis goes out and it measures the actual time between the cars on Atlantic as they're driving, okay? So we actually time, how much time is there between this car and the next set of cars, right? Because you need a certain amount of time to actually make a movement out of the driveway safely, because you have to merge with traffic, cross-traffic, that kind of a thing. So the gap study showed that there's well-sufficient gaps for the traffic to actually turn in and out of that driveway. We want to make sure that people can do that, and they're not going to have, you know, a time period where they're going, "I don't have enough time to make this turn," and then they do something dumb. That's the last thing we want to see. So we wanted to make sure that we have enough time for those motorists to get in and out of the driveways, and they do. So the other thing that I mentioned was the queue study. Um, so we looked at the southbound queuing on Scrivener, because we know that that traffic at times is going to block the driveway. So if you look at, um, the next page after the, um, capacity analysis, page seven in the report, you'll see a couple of bar, bar graphs. Um, and hopefully you guys have it in color. Mine's in black and white, but it's fine. I, thank you.
It's very inexpensive, this report.
So the orange color is the southbound through and right turn lane. Those are combined in one lane, and then there's a separate left turn lane. The blue is the left turn lane, okay? So there's a little bit fewer left turns, so there's not as much of a queue from that, but there's definitely a queue from the southbound through and right turn lane. Then you'll see two other black lines that go all the way across. The lighter lines are, um, the averages of those, and then the very dark line is the location of the driveway. Now, these two graphs are on different scales, because there was, um, more traffic in the morning than in the evening peak. So that's why it looks like the driveway's in a different location, but it's not. So basically, about, um, seven to 10 cars will, will block the driveway, okay? And you can see that in the morning, that happens for about a 20-minute period. The driveway will be blocked, so it'll be difficult to get out of that driveway. But motorists, the drivers have the option of using the Atlantic driveway.
Is that, you're talking, say, 7:51 through 8:09 or something?
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. And then in the evening, it's hardly blocked at all, because we don't have the school traffic coming out. It's all done already when we have our peak, okay? Um, so two things I want to mention. One is that we did include school buses. We counted all the school buses, um, at the intersection in every direction, and the queue analysis takes into account the school buses as well. And the second thing that I want to mention is that when we did our trip generation, and I mentioned the 40 and 50 numbers, how many cars would be going in and out during the peak, that's absolutely the driveway number, but one thing that this study did not take into account, because we try to be conservative and look at a worst case, is what we call pass-by trips. So a lot of times with a daycare center, we see as much as a 50% pass-by rate, and what that means is that people that are already on Atlantic, they go back and forth on Atlantic every day to go to work, and now you build this daycare center, they're going to put their kids in this daycare center, because it's already on their way to work. So they're already part of the traffic anyway, and we didn't account for that.
Right, they're just stopping. Got it.
Yeah.
All right.
So when you say the driveway's going to be blocked during this period of time in the morning, from 7:51 to 8:09 or whatever, what's the average wait for a car to pull out into the traffic?
So that's, um...
You know, you had it back here. You said it's going to be blocked.
Yeah, but every time the traffic signal cycles, that traffic clears out. So that's when you can get out of the driveway, or they can use the driveway on Atlantic.
How long do they wait? By the third light, you get out, there's traffic in the way?
Um, well, I mean, according to this, it's Scrivener, westbound left, it's 13 seconds on average.
Per car?
Yes, per car, yes. Yep, on average. So some people might have to wait a little longer, some people might hit the light just right and be able to pull right out. But, you know, I mean, when you're dropping off your child and you're on your way to work and you have to be at work at certain time, if you start coming here and you find that you're running into a problem with the traffic, you're going to adjust your schedule and drop your child off a little earlier.
Right. Okay.
Very nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
That's, um, a nice explanation. You know, when you're a layperson, you look at the stuff and you need, think you know what you're looking at, but...
Right, yep.
It definitely helps.
The, um, the number of trips, you said that was based on, uh, history from some of the other centers?
Yes, two other centers, yep.
I was just thinking what the sensitivity would be with the results if it was plus-minus 10%, but I think you stating that you did not account for the cars that would already be in the mix.
Right.
So I think that would probably put these more on, you know, more conservative.
Yeah, definitely.
They can't change their occupant load, that's regulated by a state agency. They, they can't just decide they're going to take in 10 more kids a day.
Oh, I realize that, but the, the trip, I'm saying, these, these numbers are based on some prior, but there could be some differences. There's going to be a variation in that number.
Well, if the, if the occupant load of the other two facilities that, that they looked at is similar to the occupant load of this one, should be reasonable.
You're, you're both right. You, you're right, they can't increase the number of children at the center, but the number of parents who pick up or drop off during the peak hour could change. You know, it could change based on the traffic, it could change based on a holiday, you, you know?
So when you've done these studies in the past, and you make assumptions based on, uh, the performance or the experience of another location, whether it's a daycare or any other, how right are your numbers in, on average?
We've found over the years that, um, with most of the studies that we've done, we always err on the high side, and so usually, when we go back and do a post-study, we find the traffic to actually be less.
Okay. Okay? Good? Feel free to ask any other questions, guys, because who knows?
Overall, you're going to introduce more traffic to that intersection?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Does that also correlate to increasing the risk of an accident happening?
Anytime you increase traffic, it increases the risk of an accident.
A little bit, or is it significant?
It's, it's a little, it's a little bit, yeah.
A little percent?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a small percentage. I mean, traffic signals in and of themselves tend to create locations for accidents, especially rear-end accidents.
I know.
Is this helpful?
Bill, what was that percentage you used? I just didn't catch it.
I just said under 1%.
Okay.
Just throwing that out there, and the answer was yes, under 1%.
Yeah.
Are you... Has this been helpful? Is, uh...
Yes, very, very helpful.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions before... I don't want to say they're dismissed, but before they're dismissed.
I guess that's the big to do, the big topic, is the traffic.
Yeah, any other questions before we move on to, uh, sketch letter for them, or...
So I just, I just like to state for the record that the consultant that we hired agreed.
Yes.
Essentially, the most important piece of the TIS is that the gap analysis showed that there are adequate gaps in the traffic during peak times to allow traffic to go in and out of the site, um, based on the number of trips. So I, I think that's, um, that's really what we were after when, when we first, you know, expressed our concerns about, uh, traffic impact to the applicant when they came with the first sketch plan.
Right.
So...
Okay. All right, so with that, um, again, thank you.
Pull back to like, uh, the rest of the project and go through our sketch plan process, then?
Yeah, yeah. Let's, uh, let's go back.
Maybe get the straw. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to come back and talk with you.
Thank you.
Sorry I missed you at the last one, but good you're here.
Okay.
All right.
You got thoughts, though?
Yeah, no, I'm, I just, you know, one of the requests that they had at the last meeting was, hey, if this is going to go nowhere, we want to know now, uh, you know, so that we're not investing, uh, additional resources in something that is never going to happen. So do either, both of you feel, you know, both of you said you're on the fence, uh, the last time, are you still on the fence? Can you see yourself voting for the project based on what you now know? Can you, are, are you, you know, have you fallen off the fence one way or another?
So before they answered that question, I'd just like to make one, one other comment, and that is, when they first brought the project to us, um, we thought that the density, um, might have been a little aggressive for that location, um, in, in large part as a function of the traffic, uh, at that intersection, um, and the fact that we expressed that to them, and they significantly changed the density and the program at that location, and, uh, that their traffic study, um, showed that traffic can be reasonable. I think they've addressed the concerns that the board first expressed in this new application. I just want to get that out on the record as well.
Okay, thank you. Well...
My primary concern was the traffic. Everything else can be managed, I think, um, and having the study and having it explained, uh, I would be, I'm no longer a fence sitter, let's put it that way, I would be more in favor of this project.
Okay.
Because of what I just heard.
Okay.
That the traffic is manageable, it's not going to be that big of an impact, people aren't going to have five, 10, and eight times to get out into the traffic, it's going to be much, much less than that. So I am no longer at the fence.
Okay. How about you?
Yeah, I think the, the traffic numbers, obviously, it changes the times a little bit, but from these numbers, really not that significantly. Um, it's seconds, in some cases, it's maybe, in the worst case, um, 15 seconds, 20 seconds, just in one small window. So I think, you know, we'll see how the site plans developed. I did want to hear a little bit more, there were concerns with the pond. I think at the time, we didn't know if it was retention, detention, uh, but I think that the traffic questions have been answered positively.
Right, I mean, we haven't, this isn't a question of, uh, at least an absolute, but is it, do you see, do you feel comfortable that we could get to a point where we could approve a project?
I think so, yes.
Okay, yeah. All right, and you feel the same way, and you feel the same way, all right.
Yeah, there's, there's one other thing that I, that I forgot to mention that I, I think we should get on the record, and that is that, um, in the applicant's most recent communication to the town, uh, they pointed out that, that, uh, they did a demographic study for the need for childcare in the Penfield area, um, and according to the study, the, the need is great. So if this is a, if this is a service that's valuable to the residents of, of the town, then, uh, you know, that's a win as well.
Right, I, I completely agree. Completely agree. Uh, okay. So with that in mind, let's, uh, get our thoughts now for the sketch plan letter, and I mean, a lot of them, I think, are already addressed.
I do have, yeah, addressed a lot.
We did a lot of that.
I have, I have most of those notes already compiled from the previous meeting. Thought to your point about just obviously clarifying how that Stormwater Management Facility will be designed eventually. It's a sketch plan, so we don't have that final design yet.
Right, right.
But at least they're showing this, the space that they would need, um, to handle the site, which is what we require at this point. As they said, this is a very comprehensive sketch plan application that you're seeing, um, in terms of the site plan layout. They identify the number of variances that they would have to seek, um, with this project. It is not uncommon for those, uh, because of the use of the daycare.
Yes, let's, I guess let's speak to that a little bit right now. I know this is, is kind of premature for a sketch, but to... of premature for a sketch. But to me, the case was made for the variances in terms of setback for the shed, some of those things that, to me, that made...
On the safety concern, yeah.
Yeah, it made perfect sense to seek a variance on those types of things and have that located in that spot. And again, it'd be different if it was somebody's house and yard next door. But it's the school, and it's, nobody's going in that area anyway.
That's a drainage area for the school. It's not even a recreation area. It's literally just land that's maintained for no use by students or the public.
Right, for anybody. Right.
Exactly.
Right. Right. So they seem to be making sensible requests and decisions on this, in my view.
It's a function of their program.
Right.
Other than that, the comments would be very standard for a sketch letter for site plan specific things. You know, prepare all your engineer's report, drainage reports that you need, pair the lighting landscaping plan, so on and so forth. Obviously, we already have the traffic information clearly. So that's been provided.
If you don't already, yeah, a note asking the applicant how they intend to address safety around the boundary of the pond, maybe that's a good thing to add.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Other than those comments, we can issue a sketch letter.
Someone moved. A second.
Very close there. Very close.
I'm sorry, that was moved by...
Burton, Bastian.
It's the dynamic door.
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Kenauer?
Hi.
Okay, that's fair.
It does very much. We appreciate it.
Okay.
We'll see you around a couple of months.
All right. All right, moving on.
Okay. Billy, stick around. We only have a few things.
Yep.
All right. Fantastic. So we'll jump back into the order of the application of the agenda. Item number one for the Wilbur's application, that is no action this evening. No one has to be recused since we do not have Terry here tonight. Yep, you guys are good. Stay planted. Okay. Just going to take a no action and keep it moving. Onto item number two, that is Panorama Park Development at Panorama Creek Drive.
Panorama Office Park.
Correct, yep. And so you had a series, we just got, basically in your drop last week, the big-ticket items that came in was the draft and I get a declaration document that we prepared, as well as a completed full EAF for your consideration. We also just did a brief recap of some of the items that came in during the time since. They have provided the revised site plans that were required from both PRC memos and the board's discussions. For example, the pedestrian easement is now shown in that generic location that we asked for. That could be modified at a future time based on the build-out of this project. That's on the plans now. Tree protection's been shown around the oak trees that have been identified in both the conservation board's report, as well as the PRC's memo about, let's preserve these rather than knock them down prematurely. If there is the opportunity to save them through development, we have that. And we did receive a memo from the Penfield Trails Committee as well, again, speaking to accessibility through the site. If there are opportunities around Allen's Creek, so on and so forth, this is private property. But they have at least shown the intention of providing that pedestrian access through the site, while also enhancing, you know, Panorama Trail, as well as a sidewalk down the dedicated road. So for the development, there's a good amount of pedestrian accessibility for, both for people there and around the area, to get to the plaza and the other businesses that are down at Panorama Trail and Penfield Road. Those are all of those. The, with regards to traffic on this project, I know Jim, you asked me to take a look at that, just kind of any final comments on that. The final letter we received from our consultant was on May 10th, and that was in response to their responses to our consultant's initial memo. So we had our impact study, our consultant did a review, and we had some responses. And then we have one more conclusion letter from our consultant saying that, yes, they can provide the adequate gaps for the left turn lanes in to the project site. And they were supportive, as well as the county DOT was supportive, of providing a 200-foot turn pocket lane as opposed to the 150 that was proposed initially. Those have all been adjusted and on the plans. Everything's been accommodated for and captured in the negative declaration with regards to traffic connectivity.
I think we have a new applicant.
EPods, we might. We might. We might. How's it going? Welcome to the show. I don't know what's going on. Yeah, just again, to recap, the NIGDEC does go into all those details about the EPod, the limits of disturbance with regards to the EPods buffers to the adjacent zoning districts being residential and general business, as well as the manufactured homes. All those things have been accommodated for in the NIGDEC. Does anyone have any questions about the contents of the NIGDEC that was provided to you?
No.
Any questions, concerns, thoughts about this project? Again, it is for a dedicated road and the infrastructure associated with it. It is not for any buildings at this time. And then we start earthwork, general rough earthwork on those pad sites to kind of start painting a picture within those limits of disturbance. Any questions about that?
No. I think we could entertain a motion to...
There would be three votes tonight, then. The first being accepting the full EAF. Then there would be the negative deck, and then table the application in preparation of an approval resolution.
Right. Somebody want to...
So we can start the roll there.
Yeah.
Okay.
One second.
So jealous.
Hetske?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Kenauer?
Hi.
All right.
And I will move to accept the negative declaration.
One second.
Hetske?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Kenauer?
Hi.
All right. Somebody want to table with instructions to prepare a draft resolution?
I'll second.
Hetske?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Kenauer?
Hi.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Nothing on 280 Panorama?
That is correct. That item, the only thing that came in was today, and you'll have that in advance of your next meeting. We got a letter from the GPW director with his general concerns at this time for the project. And those are just based on information we have now. And as we've stated before, we're still waiting for a bulk of information on this project. So it would be appropriate to take a simple continued tabled action on this tonight until we receive everything we've asked for.
Okay. Somebody want to move the...
Move the table.
Yeah, I'll second.
Hetske?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Kenauer?
Hi.
Okay. Valleine. Right?
Yep, yep. Last item, we're going into our action items now. 1956 Empire Boulevard, it's the existing Valleine Station. They have provided a letter on 10th, as well as elevations and renderings of proposed modifications to the building facade. Yeah, we can, that one's perfect, actually. We'll start with the rendering. Currently, we got a before-and-after picture here to help paint the picture for you. On the bottom left is the...
Is the current?
Is the current, yep. And that building, that, the bump out you see at the bottom with the glass block on the corner nearest to you in the picture, is what's being, the heaviest modification is changing that to what's being shown on the rendering. Colors match what's out there today. They are showing a replacement of the banner sign across the front with awnings and moving the signage to the pillar structure, squaring that off. It's currently a round corner on that building, and they're going to square that off with that element there. They do know that they're only allowed one sign, and I communicated that to them. They're only going to seek one sign on the building. Otherwise, they go to the zoning board for what's being shown there.
So which side would that be on, then?
I'm going to, I'm going with the front.
It would be the front facing Empire Boulevard.
Okay.
Yes. Because you do, there's a monument sign out front as well, existing. So they do have visibility from the front for traffic going on.
Are those awnings lit from within or something?
Fair question?
No.
No? Are they metal?
Yes. Standing scene.
And, let's see here, could you go back to the front view drawing, Doug, we had? So then, they're doing just a minor treatment to the trim on the left side of the building there as well, where you see that too. That wasn't proposed to be squared off on the corner there, on the left side?
Left side, no, due to the fact that that driveway is already narrow to...
Tight. That's what I thought.
So that structure on the right, is that a new 14 by 14 structure?
It's replacing what's there.
It's replacing what's there.
It's extending what's there.
It's black.
Okay, I see. All right, got it.
So there's going to increase in square foot to the building footprint?
A very minor increase due to that.
Okay.
Okay.
Square it off. Yeah. Picture you had was perfect.
I justify a fireman's effect statement.
Watch out for the bush.
I'm sorry, I couldn't make the joke.
We're going to lose some greens.
I'm sure you do.
Going to lose some green space there.
The other element, and again, the colors and materials have been documented on that, the plan drawing we just saw showing that corner detail. They've all been identified there. The last thing I was going to highlight is that they are providing a new dumpster enclosure around what is currently not an enclosed dumpster situation.
Okay.
With a wood fence material. Other than that...
Will the building sign be lit?
The new building sign on the tower structure, yes.
Yeah. How?
It would be that lit.
Okay. Anybody have any concerns, questions?
No. I think it's a nice improvement.
Okay. Somebody want to move it?
So...
Nobody? Wow. Everybody jump in.
I'm sorry.
Burton, Bastian.
Burton, Bastian. Nobody wants their name in the minutes.
Hetske?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Kenauer?
Hi.
So I'll be in touch with a letter documenting all this for you. And then next step would be applying for the building permit.
Very good. Thanks for your time.
Sure.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay. Any other business we need to address?
Nope, we have one item for June public hearing. It's Presbyterian Church.
I feel Presbyterian Church on Jackson Road.
There we go. I always forget which peak on this before.
That's right around the curve, right?
Yep, right around the curve there. Heritage Christian Services is proposing a new group home. So it would be a two-lot subdivision for a new residential home. And we will see that in June. Just don't ask me any questions. I'm just showing you now as a teaser.
So that's where we go.
Watch the trailer. No questions.
All right, all right.
I know you're excited about this one, but you're just going to have to...
Keep my lip zipped.
Settle down.
Zip my lip.
Other than that, nothing left.
All right. No further business. We will adjourn. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Have a great Memorial Day.
We do the same.
And remember...